All right, good morning, everyone. It's 9:00 AM, our final meeting of the year, December 27, 2017. I hope everyone had a nice holiday. And let's begin a relatively brief meeting here and start off with a prayer. Then we'll have a pledge of allegiance. Dear Heavenly Father, we just praise you for this wonderful Christmas season and a chance to spend time with our family and friends and to celebrate your birth, the coming of God to our earth for forgiveness and salvation. We just thank you for this special time of the year. Lord, we turn our hearts to those that are sick and hurting, to those who are overseas and away from their families, serving our country. We just pray for them, Lord, for their safety, for their well-being, for their ultimate return. We turn this meeting over to you, Lord, and we ask your blessing upon this coming year for everyone in Titus County, for those that work within the county, for those that serve, our first responders. We pray, Lord, for our quiet and calm holidays we continue through the first of the year. Bless this meeting in Christ's name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, item number one is our time for public comments. If anyone has any general statements that they'd like to make at this time, this is your opportunity. If not, I'll move into item number two, where we will consider and possibly approve minutes from our last meeting, our December 11 regular meeting of the court a couple of weeks ago.
Make motion, we approve.
Motion is made by Commissioner Parker to approve that set of minutes.
Six.
And it's seconded by Commissioner Applewhite. All those in favor of approval say aye.
Aye.
Item number three is report from our road engineer, Roger Ledbetter. And Philip Hoffman are here this morning. Welcome, gentlemen.
Morning.
Morning.
All right, we have done some fog sealing on County Road 2930, which is out of Hope Landing. And we also did fog seal on 2920, which is one that goes out of Lonskap.
Is that something? We've got the equipment to do?
Yes, with the distributor we can fog seal. It's just basically shooting a light coat over. You can do it, you know, if you've got low humidity, if you're on a cooler day, you can shoot fog.
Wait a minute, say that again?
Fog seal.
What?
Low humidity. If you've got low humidity, on a cool day, a cool sunny day, you can shoot fog. You can't shoot seal coat, but you can shoot fog.
That's where you're putting the wrap out?
No, no, this is just a thin layer of asphalt. We actually put a thin layer of asphalt over a hot mix surface.
Sealer?
Not seal coat, it's a sealer, but it's kind of like a thin seal coat, but no rock.
What, that's the main difference, there's not as much, not any aggregate in a fog seal?
There's not any aggregate in fog, plus it's a thinner layer of asphalt. You see it a lot, a lot of parking lots, you know, they come in there and they put that black liquid on it. That's basically what they're doing, they're fog.
And what do you call it?
FOG.
F-O-G, F-O-G, fog.
Fog seal.
Really?
What it, what it does, a lot of times when roads got cracks in them.
Yeah, I've seen them.
Fills those cracks up.
Yeah, I've seen them do it. I know what this is doing.
We did that as part of the Loop project. I remember that, that subject came up, fog sealing on some part of the Loop project back, maybe 2348 or Highway 67 out there at that intersection.
Yeah, we may have fog sealed over 2348. Or maybe it was at 1735, no, 2348 FM 4000. I think they fog sealed it.
Well, let me interrupt you. Some of the, talking to the hand, some of the stuff that, where you're putting out the wrap?
Yes.
Are you able to put some, some of this on top of that? Or put some?
No, you wouldn't, you couldn't put enough on there.
You couldn't?
No, not just, I mean, we're not making a total mix out of it.
Yeah.
Now, if it gets good and tight, if we can set it up good and tight, which we probably couldn't this time of year, we probably can maybe this spring or summer, we might be able to set up some of the wraps good and tight and actually shoot some oil on top of it and see what happens.
You mean mash that wrap?
Yeah, that wrap, yes.
Mash it down?
Yes.
With that big roller, that big machine?
Yes.
Packer?
If we got enough fines in it, it ought to pack, similar to what Flex Base.
Yeah, yeah. Sorry about that, go ahead.
All right, we still got some touch-up work we need to do around Hope Landing. There's a few little spots we missed, we need to go back and catch them. Then out on the Lons Road, we've only went to the restaurant so far, we're going to continue and get the rest of it if we ever get another date, another day where we got cool and it's humidity's low, which I don't know when that'll happen again. You know, we had about two weeks there, we had real good weather, we could fog seal, but I just don't know if we'll get it back or not. We completed hauling wrap on County Road 1360 from the log house down to County Road 1250. And we also hauled some wrap on some of the worst spots on 1250 from the Franklin County line over to County Road 1070.
Yeah.
And we've also been hauling wrap in Precinct 1 mixing field. We were ever side cutting most of County Road 4805, we had problems with side cutter. So hopefully we can go back and get the rest of it. I think they only liked about 100 yards on one side. And we'll continue to side cut after the first of the year. We currently have two side cutters in the shop, but hopefully we can get them out pretty quick. One of them, the main pin, is broken on, and the other one, we broke the part on the head of the blade. When we got those ordered, I think.
Have you got them in?
They'll be here next week. Be here next week, okay. So hopefully we can get side cutters on them again. We've continued to patch spot holes, clear trees and limbs off of various county roads. And now I want to talk to you about the Seaman Mixer that Precinct 1 has. We had sent it down to George Paint Incorporated, and they took a look at it to see what we could do to fix it.
Yeah.
And what they found, it's got internal problems with the hydrostatic transmission. They don't think we can find parts for it. And, I mean, it's, it'll still move right now.
Yeah.
It kind of moves slowly, but it will move. The mixer will turn, the engine runs on it. We'd like permission to take it to the Richard Brothers Cell and get rid of it.
Shouldn't, yeah. I wanted, I didn't know what it was, I'd have sold it four years ago.
Okay.
We've never used it, we've never, and I really didn't know what it was supposed to do, for sure.
Yeah, it's, it's got a power problem with the transmission.
Yeah.
If you start going uphill.
The tractor?
The tractor part of it's good, it's just the transmission, and it's got a hydrostatic transmission. You know, somebody might buy it for parts, to fix one that got it. But we, from what they're telling us, you probably can't find parts without a hydrostatic transmission.
I doubt you can.
You think, does Philip have one? Precinct 3 have one, kind of like it? Or did they?
I only got the old Rex mixer, but it's not like a Seaman.
It's more out too.
Yeah, it's more out too.
The mixer I've got is still good shape.
Yes.
I'm at the mixer that was in Precinct 2, should have been in good shape.
Right, yeah, it's one pulled back behind the tractor. We're, we're good luck out of it. So, everybody's okay with?
Tell me the name of it, so I can get it on the agenda properly.
Seaman.
Seaman?
S-E-A.
S-E-A-M-A-N.
Mm-hmm.
S-E-A-M-A-N. What is the piece, what is it called?
It's a mixer.
S-E-A-M-A-N, I think, yeah.
Seaman is the brand?
Seaman is the brand.
Mixer. Everybody's going to know what that is if I put Seaman Mixer on the, on the next agenda. Okay?
But everybody's all right getting rid of it?
Oh, yeah. Probably sell it for scrap iron. That thing must weigh a million pounds.
Yeah, I'm not sure how much it weighs, but you know, get less for it.
No, we're not going to get much for it.
Probably sell it better than the Richard Brothers, because people buy it for parts.
Yeah, I think somebody's buying it for parts.
Since it runs, moves, all the working components work on it, it, I think it'll sell a little better than the truck still.
Our problem with it, it wouldn't even climb over a wind rolled material. We took it to the ramp stop fire cut, climb up the ramp stop fire, wouldn't climb.
All right, I'll have that on the next agenda for authorization.
Okay. Y'all got any questions? We have got a whole lot going on right now, most of the guys are off. We'll be just pretty much patch and polish it.
Anybody got a question, comment? I do. Thank you, Roger.
Thanks.
Now, Roger, I, and I think, I know Philip knows this, but out there at my shop now, I've got box, I got a chance to buy those big mixer blades, and I've, there's a bunch out there.
What other guys own those?
Okay, well, there's, if things, what are they now? I bought those for like $2 a blade.
Yeah, I don't know how nice they are.
Well, they're, they're high now. Because I, they were having a sale on them, and I got a bunch of them because I knew we were going to be using them for a long time.
Moving right along, I don't have anything to sandwich in between these next items, so we'll just get right into our approval of the oral and written reports.
Thanks, Harold.
We made all the transfer for the year, all the transfer for the land, handling the precinct here, would look like an election fund, and two pieces will move to the special level, special level.
Carl, we've already bought our bucket machines, haven't we?
We've already bought them last year.
Oh, yeah.
Was the last one on the list that I didn't get? How about that 265, the quarter, the way, there's a track that's built in the list?
You've done that, you've done that, let me guess you something.
Uh-huh. Hey, what do you say back?
I'm sorry, I'm on election stuff.
Yeah, well, I, I knew they'd ordered it, but I think we've got it in.
I screwed it all game in.
They already used it.
Yeah, they've used it.
Yeah.
Our health insurance, is it on January to December?
Yes, sir.
So we don't know how we come out on the end of that until December's over.
Well, when they have those meetings, that's a pretty good idea about what the last two months have been to be grabbed, they have to. Well, they got a little longer here, but.
What about those big claims, they always?
Basically, big claims, the biggest claims don't have anything to do with whatever that's a little bit close to cancer line, the biggest claims.
That don't change the, how much a year each, each person costs us. Or, I mean, how much we have, other words, are we paying $12,000 a year for health insurance? $6,000 a year?
We're already on the hook until we get to the end of the year. We have to look and see cash in our accounts due, but we have to kind of estimate that because we have to put those numbers in place in October, so then to be able to do the signups in early December, so that it's effective and we're correct. So, whatever changes we've made, we've already made for the year, hopefully they're not to keep the numbers deep. But now the issue is, we have 194,000 in the budget. It's about 500,000.
How much?
500,000, what's in there right now?
It's what you, expense star.
That's how much cash we've got.
Cash, but then those.
And you just kind of have to wash that out over the course of the year. It gets down towards the end of the year, instead of maintaining $500,000 all time, then you go that your money you're putting in every month is covering the bills that you have. If that cash down starts going down, consistently stays down, then you either need to change what you put in from employees, or what the county puts in. There's been years where we've put 250,000 in the county. This year we only brought in 104,000. And there's been some years where we've put anything.
Yeah. Well, wait a minute. Those, those big claims out, we got the 50, 60,000. Then they come in, so how, so we won't know until next year, a few months from now, how much of those we had to pay or didn't pay.
You won't know the exact number, but what happens is, once that number gets to 60, when that secondary insurance kicks in, so we only, we paid the first part.
I understand.
So we may have already hit our 60 on those cancer claims by August.
Do you think that by March 1, you could give us a report that would show us what the total cost was to the county for 2017 health insurance? In other words, the contributions that we made per employee, the amount, the lump sum amount that you transferred in, plus the premiums that we paid for stop loss? In other words, the true total cost of our insurance during a 12-month period?
I think so.
Think we could?
January, January, rather than September, September, that's what we, that's what we have.
Yes, yes. So that we would know, what is the true cost per employee? You know, we've been 750, 850, 900, are we?
It can be done, how much is the problem, just as we do all hours on a September, fiscal year basis, so you'd have to go back and forth.
Whatever's easiest, I'd like to see a 12-month total.
Fiscal year, if it's just as, yeah, okay with me.
Fiscal year with God, because we, we accrue every outstanding item that we know of. By the time Lady gets here in December, even if the insurance hasn't paid those claims, they've been processed, and we know where they're, and we know how much the secondary insurance costs us, and we know how much you send all that claim bill, repay, or draw a different pay in October, November, for one year, for that year. We try to do that on a cool basis, and put it as payable and receivable. Like, get to those numbers.
Could we look at that, September to September?
That should be what Lady gives you on the office, she should have sent her a lot of checks, that's right. That's, that's the way we try to do that. We try to get the act, we try to do the insurance on a cool basis. And by December, we should know what's on there.
Okay, could we look at it, maybe the first, first meeting in January, just, just so we see, here's what the, here's what the insurance is truly costing us.
Well, there's going to be fiscal year, it's not going to be.
That's fine. And let's maybe compare 1617 with 7, well, 1516 with 1617.
Right.
I'm just curious if we've held, or if we've continued to rise. And, you know, it's hard, it's hard to know that information by looking at this, because you've got several components. You've got the premiums we pay, that I think absolutely has to be included in that total, plus the money out of pocket that we fund the account, that we fund the insurance account with. All right, I'm going to put that on the agenda.
The last major year, well, it was last year and the year before, and we have had some years in there where we can't.
That's a major, we didn't have to.
That's right.
We had some years where we had to.
Okay, so for the fiscal year ended September 30 of 17, and same, same numbers for, well, 16 and 17. Okay. Any other questions on?
Judge, do we do that in our fiscal year or our insurance, on fiscal year since?
Doesn't really matter, that's not necessarily up to us, it's more up to the insurance companies. And it really doesn't make a difference, I mean, it doesn't help you plan any better.
Would rather have maybe to be easier to track or easier to see, when everyone get ready to do a budget or something.
No, it's not.
If the number dropped, we have to have a lot of people.
You gonna go back to the year before?
We base it more on what the claims have looked like during the year, and we'll have a pretty good feel for that when, when budget time comes.
You can just about expect two or three cases a year that's not good. What happened last year is we had, what, seven major claims? And that's the reason, basically what you do is prove that money, those good years, and you have it to help pay for those bad years. You're not, we have caps and them hired to oversee it and pay the bills and stuff, but you're going to have some years where you're going to carry over. When we first started this, we carried over a lot of money, because everybody was young.
And I don't think we've carried any over in the last three years.
May not have, because I know the last two years, we've had bad years. But that's, that's the reason you have those good years, you prove that.
We may carry over. We have an account where we have that cash, and carry over, that's?
The insurance is an account, it's all, it's a insurance.
It's not, it's not.
It's sensitive to cash.
Part of the budget, though, the budget ends and starts anew, but it don't end with that, huh?
No, well, you budget what you're going to add, what's that you're going to pull out, and then you, you have, like, compared to general accounting, you have to get a lump out, you try to, unless you intentionally plan to do it, you try to dip into that lump out, and you try to dip into it. Usually, you set this up or down, so.
A carryover would occur in a year where Carl accrued more money per employee than the plan actually paid out.
Right.
And that figure right now is 900 per month?
900 per month.
900 per month.
10,000 per year.
As you're.
You're right, Judge.
It's only 850.
Per employee.
Per employee, per year. Now, then whatever they, then we said we have to pay for the dependent coverage, the employees, like that.
Employee coverage.
Employee coverage, separate counter.
That's right.
Budget that.
Then the, they add their family, that's another premium.
That's right, that goes into this fund also. All the premium goes in this fund. Employees pay for their spouses or their kids, if they have a home claim.
Pay the deductible.
Well, they also pay the deductible, we don't pay the deductible.
I know, but they don't.
They pay, they pay a deduction that's held out for their employee.
The deductible gets paid to the doctor, or the hospital, or the?
I understand, but what, the part that they, we have to pay, after they've reached their deductible. You've got to have.
We pay all of the claims above their deductible, from that of this fund. To him, I can answer, if you look on that page, on that second page, on the fund, it says, you see the bank account, that's 333,000. Claims, that's where we transfer the money over to UMR, and that pay out claims, they send us a report. It's not as we saying, we need you to move this much money to cover these claims that we're fixing to pay out.
Okay, wait.
Y'all saw that, and we agreed with that.
I'm not, I'm not asking the question correctly. You got, you're taking out, I mean, correct me where I'm wrong. You're taking out 900 or 850s per employee, accruing that, expensing that off, okay? Then you've got employees, dependents, that's another outline item, and you, you're putting how much money in that? Do you have a fixed amount in that?
If we take it out of their check, then she receives that at the end of her month.
You take it out of what?
Out of their check. That comes out of their check.
That comes out of the employee's check.
That's the, what comes out of his check?
Yeah.
Yeah, he pays premiums to have that, and that comes out of his check, and you put that on it.
That's right.
Okay, then the payout on that one?
You know, it's all lumped in, yeah, it's all lumped in that one insurance fund.
Okay. Could we get that for 15 as well as 16, 17?
It should be, the number straight out of the office, so that's what we're planning as we're getting money, is if we're going to turn those bills.
Well, let's boil it down for us guys can understand it, and just see if we're maintaining, if we're losing, if we're gaining, and hopefully, hopefully we're maintaining. Any other questions about your report here?
No. Make a motion, we approve the oral and written reports.
Motion is made by Commissioner Parker. It was seconded by Commissioner Fields. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item number five is our treasurer's report. Cheryl?
Did you go to Henry's, man? Did you go to Henry's, Cheryl?
I didn't either. Thank you.
You said you just made your capital murder fund contribution 12,000?
No, we're not doing it yet.
We've got four, four years of that piled up now.
Yes, we're pulling it down.
Yes, we're, we're getting that.
Make a motion to approve.
Thank you. Motion is made for approval by Commissioner Applewhite.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Parker. All in favor of approval of the treasurer's report, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Item six, budget amendments, if any.
Yeah, one, Judge, number four. This is, uh, as you recall, when we first did the budget, we were going to transfer five hundred thousand, we made special, we asked everybody to do the transfer. We're only going to do two fifty. That's what's all we agreed on, so let's, let's have a bit of a change. That's all we.
Right, and we approved that fixed amount of two fifty, and so you've done that as of December twenty.
Make that motion.
Okay, motion's made for approval by Commissioner Fields on this single budget amendment item, transfer of the two fifty into the road and bridge fund.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parker, was that right?
Yes.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. All right, item seven, signed pay orders and approved payments.
Make motion with pair of bills.
Motion's made by Commissioner Parker.
Second.
And seconded by Commissioner Applewhite. All in favor, say aye. Item number eight, closing comments, if any. I'll start on my right. Commissioner Riddle?
Wish everybody a happy new year.
Indeed. Commissioner Fields?
I, I, I just want to say, ask Roger something real quick. On that wrap, how much have we roughly gotten so far?
Uh, we probably got close to twenty-five hundred.
Four, five hundred cubic yards?
Twenty-five.
Oh, two thousand. Okay. Well, we got eight thousand cubic yards, and that's four times what we normally get, and I did, I did thank them on behalf of everybody for that material. That's a, about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars in material. So. Okay, my sentiments would be the same as Al. Everybody a happy new year, and a safe one. And, and I, let me say this. I have a grandson in Bahrain or somewhere over there in the Middle East. Keep him in your prayers. He's in the Navy.
All right. I don't believe I have anything. Commissioner Applewhite?
I'd like to have, keep the Kirkwood family prayers and stuff.
Yes.
Continue to pray for that family.
Michael Kirkwood passed away on, was it Christmas Eve?
All about.
Yep.
I have anything, don't have anything. Just, just wish everybody a happy new year.
All right, well, thank you all for a wonderful two thousand and seventeen, and I'll see most of you back before then, but if not, I'll see you back next year. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn when you're ready.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Commissioner Applewhite?
Second.
Commissioner Parker. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right.